Good evening, everyone. Welcome to December 16th, 2024 Greensboro Planning and Zoning Meeting. My name is Catherine Magid. I am the Chair of the Commission. If the other Commissioners will introduce themselves, starting from the right. Betty Turner.
Marsha Downing.
Sandra O'Connor.
Mary Skanes.
Erica Glass.
Paul G. Gilmore, senior.
Stu Nichols.
Thank you. Please note that this meeting is being conducted in person and online. If anyone participating online needs help with Zoom during this meeting, please email Luke Carter at lucas.carter@greensboro-nc.gov. Members of the Commission are appointed by the City Council and serve without pay. The Commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each Commissioner normally visits each site prior to this meeting. The procedure used at this public hearing is as followed. Planning staff presents background information and makes a recommendation. The applicant will present a short summary of how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Any Commissioner member may ask questions once the presenter has completed their presentation. The applicant and those wanting to speak in favor of the request have a shared total of 10 minutes to speak. Then those wanting to speak in opposition to the request have a shared total of 10 minutes to speak. The applicant and those in favor of the request share five minutes of rebuttal time. Then those in opposition to the request share five minutes of rebuttal time. When the case is called that you are interested in, people wishing to speak online will need to use the raised hand function under the reaction button and will be called upon to speak in order in which hands were raised. Please find the raised hand function under the reaction button now. People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium and when you called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please all direct all comments and questions to the zoning Commissioners. Participants in the Zoom meeting will be able to view the meeting and speak when they are called upon. All Commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. The process after our deliberation. All approved ordinance or denied cases receiving six or more favorable votes will constitute a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fees paid within 10 days. All ordinances receiving a majority of favorable votes but less than six will be subject to a public hearing by the City Council. All annexed ordinances receiving six or more votes will be favorably recommended and subject to a public hearing by the City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition is expressed to the Planning Department and in which Commissioner members do not feel necessitates an in-depth discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda and will be called the expedited agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation of these cases and the applicant will have up to two minutes to address the Commission if they desire. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the Greensboro Television Network, GTN. In addition, the telecast is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. First on the agenda, acknowledgement of absence. We have no absence. Mr. Peterson will be on Zoom.
Yes, that's it.
Are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the November 18th, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone opposed? Now we will have some insights from our city attorney.
Thank you, Chair Magid, and good evening, everyone. Much of the Planning and Zoning Commission's work this evening will relate to the consideration of rezoning applications. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance that when the Commission considers rezoning applications, its determinations are based on the land uses allowed under the zoning district that's been put forth in the application and any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters and it's important to know that the Commission is not here to determine all details of the development. This involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the Commission's work. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, the Commissioners will have been provided with a traffic, excuse me, a summary traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features such as the management of stormwater are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than in this forum here tonight. Lastly, concerns that are not related to land use are not germane to the Commission's consideration of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates, current or anticipated school capacities, and questions of who may own, live, at, or use the subject property are not for the Commission's consideration. If there are questions about matters that are not addressed this evening, those may be referred to the Planning Department or the Technical Review Committee as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Withdrawals and continuances. Mr. Kirkland, the applicant for Z 12-003-14, Vidalia Road, has asked for a continuance for January 13th.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any objections? If not, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone opposed? All right, we will now move to the expedited agenda. It's my understanding that we have one case in opposition to tonight. So we will, let me read the expedited cases. Z 24-12-001, 3315 Sandy Ridge Road. Z 24-12-004, 3701 Groom Town Road. Z 24-12-005, 2220 Huffine Mill Road. I'd like to take a moment to make sure that no one here in the chamber or online has opposition to any of these cases. Seeing none, we will proceed with the expedited agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is item Z 24-12-001, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to LI Light Industrial for the property identified as 3315 Sandy Ridge Road, generally described as west of Sandy Ridge Road and south of Sider Road, 0.5 acres.
Can I read the, can I read it first?
That's right.
Let me just read that case into the record first. Thank you. I was so excited to see you, so sorry. Z 24-12-001, a rezoning request for R3 Residential Single Family 3 to LI Light Industrial for the property identified as 3315 Sandy Ridge Road, generally described as west of Sandy Ridge Road and south of Sider Road, 0.5 acres. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This property, this is the zoning map of the area showing that the subject property, approximately 0.5 acres, is located west of Sandy Ridge Road and south of Sider Road. This is a rezoning request, as you said, from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to LI Light Industrial. North and east of the request are zoned R3 and LI. South and west of the request are zoned LI. This is the aerial map of the property, showing that the subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. North of the request contains a single-family dwelling and undeveloped land. East of the request contains a warehouse and undeveloped land. South of the request contains building material sales use and west of the request contains undeveloped land. And in recommending approval of the request, staff noted that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future built form map designates this site as urban general on the adjacent to a district scaled activity center. The Western Area Plan's future land use map designates this site as commercial mixed use. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to increase and preserve the inventory of developable sites compatible with corporate industrial uses. The request also supports the prioritizing sustainability goal to build economic resilience, expand local economy's ability to withstand and adjust to disruptions and changes at the regional, national, and global scales. And staff noted that the proposed LI zoning district would permit uses similar to those present on adjacent tracks and that care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower density residential uses on nearby properties. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes. Do I see the applicant? Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Terrific.
Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion. Would someone please read the motion?
The Greensboro, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the zoning request for the property at 3315 Sandy Ridge Road from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to LI Light Industrial to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed Light Industrial zoning district permits uses that fit the context of surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Do you have a second, please?
Mr. Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Mr. Turner and Mr. Gilmore. Let's see, now we need to take a vote. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Peterson?
Say again.
Will you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2024, at the City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of such, of any appeal. The next expedited case. Z 24-12-004, a rezoning request for CDRM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18, to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial for the property identified as 3701 Groom Town Road, generally described as south of west Vidalia Road and east of Groom Town Road, approximately 0.93 acres. Mr. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it contains approximately 0.93 acres and is currently zoned Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18 and the rezoning request is to go to Conditional District Light Industrial. You can notice to the north, you've got commercial low, Conditional District Commercial Low with a shopping center to the north. You've got Conditional District RM 18 with multifamily dwellings to the east. And then to the south is a portion of a religious assembly use. That portion that's in the city is zoned Conditional District RM 18. And then to the west, you have a convenience store and a self-storage facility zoned city commercial low and that's County HB, I think. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general and within an urban mixed-use corridor on the future built form map. The GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as commercial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed and the Comprehensive Plan's filling in our framework strategy to encourage higher density, mixed use, and walkable infill development. The proposed Conditional District Light Industrial zoning district as condition would limit all uses to those that are permitted in the LI zoning district except hotels and motels and the manufacture and assembly of appliances, equipment, instruments, which would include musical instruments, precision items or electrical items, sporting goods, and toys. The proposed rezoning facilitates the preservation and adaptive reuse of a historically significant structure. The proposed zoning request is also appropriate given the property's location along the major thoroughfare. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions? Okay, seeing.
I note, Commissioner Nichols, I note the reference to the historical, historically significant structure. Can you comment more on that?
We do have the applicant here, this is Preservation Greensboro, and they may be able to specifically address any status that the structure has as far as historic preservation
Can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Pratt, 910 Magnolia Street.
Hey, I'm Marsh Prowse and my address is 516 Woodmore Avenue.
Thank you. We are both members of Preservation Greensboro Development Fund. It is a nonprofit. We are a small preservation revolving fund where we obtain distressed properties and then find a buyer who will adaptively reuse them. Can we first go back to the, oh, well, here we go, here's the barn.
Just in case anyone was wondering what this looks like.
This was part of the Sedgefield Showgrounds property. It was 18 acres, multiple barns, lots of rings, lots of horses. It was sold by the family several years ago for affordable housing. There was a lot of whatever in the community.
Controversy.
Yeah, that's a good word. And part of dealing with that controversy is we were given this barn. It took several years to actually obtain the barn legally because it's for all the finances to go through for affordable housing management and their loans. And they have finished phase one and they are going to do phase two and three. So that entire rest of that property will be built out as affordable housing. We have buyers looking at the barn who would like to turn it into commercial office space or some kind of adaptive reuse. It can no longer be a barn. There's no grass anywhere to put a horse now. And so that's, that's our goal.
The, I think you were asking about the designation.
We do have a preservation easement on the dirt where the property cannot be demolished. And part of the rules that will go with buying it from us is that it has to be adaptively reused, it has to be restored, it cannot be torn down, and other buildings cannot be placed on the property larger than this, than this barn.
Thank you for your clarity. That's very helpful. We appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions for us?
No, we don't. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate it so much. Okay, with that said, and since we have no other questions, we will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for agenda item Z 24-12-004. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 3701 Groom Town Road from CDRM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18, to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed CDLI zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of surrounding areas and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area, and it will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Sandra O'Connor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Ms. O'Connor. Now, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Peterson. That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal paid fee within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, January 21st, 2024 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next case. Z 24-12-005, a rezoning request from PUD Planned Unit Development to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial for the properties identified as 2220 Huffine Mill Road and 2050 Willow Lake Road, generally described as south of Huffine Mill Road and east of Willow Lake Road, 59.2 acres. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows that it contains approximately 59.2 acres and is currently zoned Planned Unit Development. The rezoning request would be to take it to a Conditional District Light Industrial zoning district. You'll notice to the, the property is, has county property to the north and the, in the west. To the north, you've got RS 30 with a manufactured home overlay district to the north and then some agricultural farther north. To the east is City HI and there's the highway I-40 to the, to the east. To the south is a single-family dwelling zoned County Ag. And then to the west is single-family dwellings and undeveloped land zoned County Ag and These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future built form map designates approximately half of the site as urban general and the other half as planned industrial. The Comprehensive Plan's future land use map designates, again, half of the site as residential and the other half of the site as industrial. And that is indicative of a, of a property or of an area that is in transition. The rezoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed and the prioritizing sustainability goal to build economic resilience, expanding the local economy's ability to withstand and adjust to changes in the regional, national, and global scales. The proposed CDLI zoning district as condition would allow uses that are complementary to existing uses in the surrounding area. The request is also reasonable because it is located along an interstate highway and care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials and height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to lower density residential uses on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Does the Commission have any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? Up to two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Mark Isaac sent at 804 Green Valley Road. And the only reason I would take up your time this evening is that my client, Johnson Development, the representatives, drove all the way up here from South Carolina. I thought they deserved to be recognized this evening. Johnson Development is the contract purchaser of this property. They're a very experienced developer of logistics facilities. This meets their criteria. It's at an interstate interchange, so very good access for the vehicles that will be coming in and out of this facility. And we think it's going to do well and serve the growing area as perhaps parts suppliers, that kind of thing. So just wanted you all to know why we were here. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a logistic facility? Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Without further objection, we will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 2220 Huffine Mill Road and 250 Willow Lake Road from PUD Planned Unit Development to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDLI zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, sorry. Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor, Mr. Gilmore. Now we'll take a vote. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Peterson. That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action, but I'd just like to say first before I read this, thank you so much for coming to Greensboro, North Carolina. We have heard about your business and we're very excited that you're coming here. So please forgive this expedited. So please forgive this expedited agenda. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of such an appeal. Welcome. And now we will, hello, Mr. Peterson. Now we will move to the regular agenda with a case that has opposition. Thank you. I will read it first. PLP twenty-four dash thirty-seven and Z twenty-four dash twelve dash zero zero two. An annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDRM eight, Conditional District Residential Multifamily eight, for the properties identified as twenty-five twenty-seven Nelson Farm Road and thirty-eight twenty-four East Lee Street, generally described as east of Nelson Farm Road and south of East Lee Street, thirty-two point fifty-two acres. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Maggie. So this is the zoning map of the area, showing that the subject property is approximately thirty-two point five two acres and is located east of Nelson Farm Road and south of East Lee Street. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDRM eight, Conditional District Residential Multifamily eight. North of the request is zone County Ag and County RS twenty, residential single-family. East of the request is zone County Ag and City PUD, Planned Unit Development. South of the request is zone County Agricultural and City R three, residential single-family three, and west of the request is zone County Ag as well. This is aerial photography of the area, showing that the subject property contains currently contains undeveloped land. North, east, and west of the request contain single-family dwellings and undeveloped land as well, and south of the request contains undeveloped land and Interstate eighty-five. This image shows the northern portion of the subject property as seen from East Lee Street, and this image shows the western portion of the subject property as seen from Nelson Farm Road. This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request, as seen, north of the request, on Lanigan Drive, zoned County RS twenty. This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request on East Lee Street, zoned County RS twenty. This image shows a single-family dwelling located east of the request, zoned County Agricultural. This image shows a single-family dwelling located east of the request on Old Oaks Lane, zoned County Agricultural. This image shows examples of single-family dwellings and common elements located east of the request on Bellingham Court, zoned City PUD. And this image shows Interstate eighty-five, eight forty Urban Loop, located south of the request, zoned R three, City R three. This image shows undeveloped land located southwest of the request on Nelson Farm Road, zoned County AG. This image shows a single-family dwelling located southwest of the request, zoned County AG. This image shows a single-family dwelling located west of the request, also zoned County AG. This image shows a single-family dwelling located northwest of the request, zoned County AG. This image shows a single-family dwelling located northwest of the request as well, zoned County AG. And this image shows undeveloped land located northwest of the request on East Lee Street, zoned County AG. This view is facing east on East Lee Street. The subject property here is on the right. And this view is facing west on East Lee Street. The subject property is on the left. This view is facing north on Nelson Farm Road. These are the properties on the right. And this view is facing south on Nelson Farm Road. These are the properties on the left. This is the condition that was requested by the applicant and advertised as part of this request. And in recommending approval of the request, staff noted that the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan designates the site as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places goal, to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework, big idea, to arrange our land uses for where we work, live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. Staff noted that the proposed CDRM eight, Conditional District Residential Multifamily eight zoning district as condition would limit uses to single-family dwellings and townhomes with an overall growth density not to exceed eight dwelling units per acre. The proposed original zoning request allows uses that are similar to existing uses in the surrounding area, and care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. Can you answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. If the applicant would come forward and give us your name and address, you have up to ten minutes. And if anyone else wishes to speak in favor of this request, that's included in the ten minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and esteemed commissioners. My name is Lydia Matthews. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild Charlotte Office. Address is one oh one South Triane Street in Charlotte, North Carolina. I am joined here today by members of Forestar, the developer, a couple of representatives, a couple of representatives from BGE, which is our site plan engineer, and also Davenport, the traffic engineer. They're available to answer any specific questions that you might have at the end of the presentation. Just a little bit of background about Forestar. As a national developer leading the industry for over seventy years, they have several residential projects and markets across North Carolina. We had a wonderful staff report, so I'll try not to be redundant. Again, this is an annexation and original zoning into the city. The county zoning designation is agriculture, while asking for residential multifamily with a maximum of eight dwelling units per acre. And you heard the condition that's offered with this. The port, the site is thirty-two acres approximately. It's in the growth tier one. And this area, as you know, of the city is currently available to provide all city services, which include water and sewer, along with roads, fire stations, and water and sewer pipes. We have a favorable recommendation or review from TRC, as well as a favorable staff recommendation. And as you'll see in a graphic in a couple of slides, this is in harmony and in line with other projects that have been approved and developed in this area. So that's the site again, shown in yellow highlight, with Nelson Farm to the west and East Lee Street to the north. And this is a more zoomed out aerial, and as you can see by the very small lot sizes, there are a lot of subdivisions that have been developed around this area. The close proximity and convenient access to I eighty-five makes this a prime location for residential subdivision. And this is a conceptual site plan. I don't know if I can zoom in, but hopefully you have a clearer picture for you to see on your screens. The orange blocks towards the south are the townhomes, and there are, here we're showing about ninety-eight townhomes and seventy-four single-family houses, which are located further north. Private road that leads to East Lee Street towards the north, and the second anticipated access is down here by the single-family homes on Nelson Farm Road. And you see the blue kind of puddles. They show the approximate location of stormwater ponds. As you know, this is only a concept plan, so the specific location is subject to change. But the site incorporates these measures to handle the runoff and impacts of the development as required by the UDO. And those specific requirements will be handled later at site, site plan stage if the rezoning is approved. Again, the traffic impact analysis was conducted by Davenport, which I think that this commissioner is familiar with. This plan incorporated the impacts of all approved developments in this area, even if they're not currently built out. The study looked at a year after full buildout. So to clarify, I believe that anticipated buildout of the full project is twenty twenty-eight, and the traffic impact analysis looks at one year after that projected buildout. So that's where we get two thousand twenty-nine from. The largest impact from this development is expected to be at the intersection of Nelson Farm and East Lee Street. But even there, the delay that is added by the project is approximately three point five seconds at AM peak and two point nine seconds at PM peak. And all the other intersections and areas that were scoped for this traffic impact analysis are less. All scope intersections are anticipated to operate at a level of service of A or B. And so the study suggested one improvement, and that's a right turn lane with the approximate, I think, seventy-five foot storage at the access point located on East Lee Street. I think there were some questions that came in today to the city about whether there were some plans to widen any streets or roads, and that is not anticipated or suggested by the impact analysis. I think you all are familiar with my colleague, Tom Tarrell. And if you are familiar with him, you know he gives special care and attention to the neighborhood letters that he sends. So there was a detailed, seven-page letter that was sent to neighbors within seven hundred fifty feet of the property. There was also a neighborhood meeting held December third, where approximately six neighbors attended, most who just had questions and not necessarily concerns about the project. The questions that you typically get from neighbors are about traffic and environmental impacts, and the team took time to discuss the traffic study and UDO requirements that pertain to those specific areas. There are also some questions about whether other properties that are currently still in the county may be impacted and potentially involuntarily be annexed. And we explained that the city does not and cannot really under North Carolina law involuntary annex, so they would only be annexed if that is something that the property owner requested. That was explained at the neighborhood meeting. There are also a couple of adjacent property owners who raise potential concerns specific to their properties. So for example, they wanted access to the new street that is the private street from the development that will connect to East Lee Street. Forestar agreed to that. They also wanted the ability to connect to the water and sewer lines that would be extended to the property. And again, Forestar was amenable to that request. There have been not that many, well, in the neighborhood meeting, you know that our contact information is there. We provided contact information at the meeting. Up until today, we only heard from one neighbor who reached out just about questions about the next steps, and those were provided to them. There were a few instances of correspondence to the city today where the city encouraged the folks to reach out to us. We have not heard from them, but we made points to try to reach out to them to answer any questions that they might have, and are still open to doing that throughout the process. As you know, this is an annexation, so we'll have to go through another approval with the city, and we are, again, open to continuing the dialogue with the community. We've also reached out to everyone individually. I think Tom did, all the commissioners, and I have had a conversation with Councilmember Hightower where this property would be in her district if annexed. So again, we are available to answer any questions that you might have, and we ask for a favorable recommendation from the commission.
Thank you. Anyone else that wish to speak in favor? Any questions from the commissioners?
Yes. I live right outside of the seven hundred and fifty boundary of this proposed property. Can you tell me, again, I think you said, but I missed it, what's the proposed, this is single-family and?
Townhomes.
Townhome? And what is the, I guess, what is the, what is your estimate per acre in terms of, I guess, density?
Yeah, so this is a request to go to Conditional District RM eight, so eight dwelling units per acre, and that equates to about one hundred and seventy-two units total. And that, right now, kind of plays out with the current site plan to be about ninety-eight townhomes and seventy-four single-family homes. And the property is about thirty-two acres.
And the proposed site plan that you presented is, are you proposing an entrance on Lee Street and then an entrance on Nelson Farm Road?
That's correct, two access points.
And I understand with traffic studies that you have to be very careful in terms of how those are considered, but I think you said there was some, one recommendation, a turning lane on Nelson Farm, is that right?
No, the turning lane would be on East Lee Street. That's correct. And Deion Brown at Davenport is going to answer any specific questions that you have about that and the methodologies that are used in the traffic impact analysis. But again, the results show that there's no more than, there's less than a four-second impact at the full buildout of the project in twenty twenty-nine, so those were the recommendations.
Parcel, I think, is Grammer Sea Park or something like that. And then there's another neighborhood immediately to the east. Can you tell me what the density, both what the zoning is and the actual density of the development in those two neighborhoods is?
I can't. I'm going to look at my team and see if BGE might, or it looks like staff might have answers to those questions for you.
Commissioner Nichols, the PUD to the east was developed in two different phases. The single-family element of it has a growth density of four point five four units per acre, and the townhome element of it has a growth density of three point eight seven units per acre.
The Grammer Sea Park West had seventy-nine homes. I spoke to someone who lived there. That's the PUD that you're saying here. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, those who wish to speak in opposition. We have a few names on the list here. And Ebony Brown. Are you still here, Ebony Brown? If you raise your hand. Are they online? Ebony Brown. Mr. Kemp, with an H on the N, Kemp.
Is that from the actual sign-in sheet or from the online speakers?
Let me look, let me look, maybe I'm looking at the wrong speaker, sorry. Okay, sorry, let's go back to this list then. All right. Bob Zamwot. Is Bob here? All right, if you'll, you're with the developer. Oh, we have none, we have none on this list that's showing against. Let's see what we have over here. These are four. We have none. That's why I was pulling from these, because these were opposed.
I gave some misinformation a little bit earlier that I want to clear up. Although this is a request for RM eight, the density is actually a five point four.
And we'll just clarify, there's no one online to speak either.
So you gave me this, those opposed, this speaker list?
Those are people that have emailed us and requested the meeting link, and there's no one in the meeting room to actually speak.
Okay, so we have no one who is opposed to this. And we were told we had opposition. So do we have anyone in the chamber who is opposed to this application? Is there anyone online? Is there anyone online who's opposed to this application? Well, then we will move it to expedite it then, since we have no opposition, we'll just close the public meeting.
Well, Chair Maggie, yeah, I think you just close it at this point, given the lack of opposition, but it seems perhaps Commissioner Glass has a question.
Yes, I apologize. Madam Chair, I have a question of, is it the individual that prepared the traffic study, is it possible that I could ask that individual questions?
Yes, she's coming to the podium.
Thank you.
Good evening, Deion Brown with Davenport, one nineteen Brookstown Avenue, Winston-Salem. What was, what was your name, I'm sorry? Deion Brown.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, thank you for being here. I have a question. So my understanding is from the materials that was presented to the commission, the only proposed recommendation from the study is that a turning lane be added on Lee Street, if I heard correctly, is that right?
Correct.
No other recommendations with the number of, I guess, units that are proposed and the five-point-two-three acres, I think, in terms of the density?
Yes, ma'am. If, I don't know if you actually have the document in front of you, but on...
It's in our book. Do you have your book?
No, I don't. That's okay, go ahead.
Um, the proposed distribution only has fifty percent turning eastbound right onto, on Leesville, or not Leesville, Lee Street into the site, and twenty-five percent westbound left onto that access point. So with that, based upon GDOT's turn lane warrants, as well as NCDOT warrant, it doesn't warrant but more than seventy-five foot of storage and appropriate taper.
So forgive me if this is an inappropriate or dumb, dumb question, but do you also consider the other, I guess, areas in terms of residential areas that are outside of this catchment area where these homes will be?
Yes, ma'am. We do a traffic, oh, yes, new people, I'm sorry. We do a traffic count on each intersection as well as do approved developments. We get that information from either GDOT or NCDOT to determine what those distributions for those future developments are as well, and we all put that into our equations, and then we apply a growth rate. For this project, it was three percent, so that's even higher than what we usually do, which is usually two percent over the four, five years, because it was in two thousand twenty-nine, and then we distribute those tips to those different access points. Based upon those tips that we get from NCDOT, we will determine what those statistics and analysis are, as to how to optimize the performance of the property. Thank you. And just a few more questions from the board to approve site, site district, if that is relevant, I say. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you so much. So we can say we have three questions. We will close the public hearing. We'll open it off for the first just to break one more of these comments.
Additional thoughts or things that you would like to add?
I do want to clarify, so the resulting density is now five-point-two-three units per acre, and Andrew, you were mentioning surrounding area has about four units per acre, similar?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay. That's the only clarification I needed.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, first we will, first we need a motion for the annexation.
Oh, I can do both. I move that the, the property be annexed as the first item of the two-part motion.
Hold on, let me give a second.
Oh.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
This is... This is the planning zone, the commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at twenty-five, twenty-seven Nelson Farm Road and thirty-eight, twenty-four East Lee Street, from County Ag to City CDRM eight, to be consistent with the adopted GFO twenty-fourty comprehensive plan, and we consider the offer reasonable and in public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with a comprehensive plan, future build form mark, and future land use map. Two, the proposed CDRM eight zoning district as a dispend commits uses that fit the context for standing area and limits limited impacts on the vision of the property in this regard in particular, that the zoning with proposed, uh, motion will result in definitely being comfortable to standing mobile homes. And three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical characteristics, other attributes of the area that will benefit the property owner and the community and approval is in public interest. Second...
Thank you, so far, and we will take a vote. Ayes and flavors signify our same vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. That passes hundred and ninety-one. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing with the Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, State Council meeting. That ends our regular agenda. Are there any items from the planning department that you want to make us aware of?
No, nothing specific. We, as always, appreciate your efforts throughout this year as it's coming to a close. It's been an interesting year in several meetings and conversations, so we appreciate that. Just as a reminder to the commission, the January meeting will be moved up, so it's going to be the second Monday of the month, where normally our meeting is the third Monday of the month, so January thirteenth. I believe everybody also has the full twenty-twenty-five schedule at this point in time. If you don't, let us know, so we make sure you guys have that on your calendars moving forward.
How many cases will we have next month?
We have a few items that can be combined, but total is going to be about seven, and that will, we also have a text amendment.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations, Mr. Downing.
Thank you.
We're so happy to have another baby born through our group here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'd also like to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy Hanukkah and a wonderful new year, and thank you for a fantastic year. Thank you Chair O'Connor for all that you did this past year. I'm thrilled to be your chair now, and I just want to say thank you, everyone, for all that you're doing, and you're really well appreciated. And to the staff, we can't do it without everything that you're doing, so thank you so much, and of course, our legal point of view is always welcome. So thank you so much.
Madam Chair, may I add something as well?
Okay.
I want to highlight, you know, the Honorable Mayor, the Honorable Yvonne Johnson passed away, this is our first meeting without her, so we, we remember the life and legacy of the Honorable Yvonne Johnson, who served the city of Greensboro as mayor pro temp, member of city council, and as a former mayor of the city of Greensboro. We will never forget her legacy, her life, and her impact, and so we thank you for this time.
Thank you for bringing that up. We all loved her and were shocked at her death and appreciate all that she did. She changed the whole, she changed Greensboro in being the first African-American woman to be mayor and was very beloved. So thank you so much for bringing that up, Mr. Downing. Anything else? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Are you in agreement, Mr. Peterson? I think he got off. I think he's gone. All right, thank you so much.